I'd like to call the November thirteenth, twenty twenty-five Board of Supervisors meeting to order. At this time, if we would, would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by IT Support Technician Jacob Peliquin?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, uh, the invocation will be provided by Pastor Alan Gray of Royal Oak Presbyterian Church.
Invite you to pray with me. Father God, we give thanks for your constant vigilant care over your people. You are a loving shepherd and we are sheep who often stray, Lord, down dangerous paths, and we pray that you would guide and direct us, Lord, to live in the center of your will as we seek to be guided by your Holy Spirit. Lord, we confess that we are not perfect people, that we are sinners, and we ask, Lord, that your grace would descend on us. Help us, Lord, to excise those parts of ourselves that are selfish, those things in ourself that are not pleasing to you, and that the change that we want to see in the world, we would start with us, Lord. And we pray that we would seek to call on the better parts of ourselves as we try to self-govern. We pray, Lord, for this County Board of Supervisors. We're so thankful for their leadership in our community. We pray that you bless them as they seek to guide us, that you give them wisdom and understanding and insight as they try to produce just a healthy body of citizens, Lord, here in Smith County. Good quality jobs, a peaceful atmosphere, Lord, as we all seek to honor you in our work. In the wake of Veterans Day, Lord, in our remembrance of those who have served, we give thanks for our veterans today as well, and for all those who continue to serve to bring protection to our nation. We're thankful for all those sheriff deputies with us tonight, Sheriff Schuler, and we pray your blessing on all the police that operate in Smith County, Lord, and all the different areas and towns, and be over them, give them protection and guidance. And we're thankful, Lord, that they lay their lives on the line every day for us, and so help us to pray for them and to honor them for their service. We pray for our most vulnerable, Lord, for our children, for our elderly, for those who are poor, for those who have been adversely affected by the government shutdown. We just pray that we would all be compassionate, Lord, and open-handed with the resources you've given us that we might give generously to those in need. So be with us tonight, Lord. Help us to, even when we disagree, to do so with respect and honor. And we thank you, Lord, for this time. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pastor Gray. Okay. At this time, uh, do we have any amendments to the agenda?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Minutes of the previous meeting, October ninth, twenty twenty-five. I hope everyone's had the opportunity to read those.
Second.
All right, we have a motion approved, a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Presentations. Let's see, who's gonna be Johnny?
Pledge of allegiance.
Johnny Joanna would like to formally present Deputy David Frye Medal of Valor for an incident that occurred on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, where his intervention resulted in an officer involved shooting. Several lives, including Deputy Frye's, were saved.
Good afternoon. Pleasure and honor to be here before you and echo what the preacher said a little bit. I thank God for being able to stand here. Without him, I assure you, I couldn't. It is tonight that we come before you to talk about the honor and, uh, award of valor that's gonna be presented to Mr. Frye, David. I've known him for a long time outside of being in police work, known his family. He's one of a kind, as each officer that's out here tell you. When you come through the academy and you stand before the public and you go out and try to take care of things, you do pray that you'll not have to face certain things that sometimes you do have to encounter. Mr. Frye, he had to endure one of those calls that nobody wants to get. You know, when Sheriff Schuler called me and asked me to present this, he got called away to Richmond. He's up there and he started talking about valor, and I had to do a little research. Look around to see what, a lot of different things out there on the internet about valor. One of the things said that valor isn't merely the absence of fear, but it's a triumph over it. Anybody in this line of work tells you that they're not afraid at times, I'd say they're lying. And given that, the choice to act in the face of danger for the safety and well-being of others, and that's exactly what Deputy Frye did. Moments that test our valor are never moments that we want to have. But we seek, when they arrive, to rely on our training and the bonds that we forged with others. And speaking about Sheriff Schuler, he and I have taught a lot of classes together at the academy. And one thing that I can recall him telling the young cadets, and he basically says at every academy, "You've got to be able to run this way when everybody else is running that way." "You've got to be able to stand up and put yourself in between to be able to save life." In saying that, the true honor that I have is being able to work alongside these deputies. It means a whole lot. And Deputy Frye, it's an honor, and I can't say enough about it. And it's at this time, we would like to, uh, we'd like to present him with the Medal of Valor. Also, the night that this all occurred, and I know we've got some members present, we also want to thank Smith County Dispatch, Town and Civil Police Department, Chilhawee Police Department, and Smith County Rescue. They were all on scene in a matter of seconds. That bond that I just spoke about is what you gotta have, and it was exhibited that night. This reads, "The highest honor is awarded to Deputy David Frye for his exceptional bravery exhibited on March the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Deputy Sheriff Frye acted heroically and beyond the call of duty at imminent risk of death and serious bodily injury to himself in order to preserve human life."
Officer Frye, this is on behalf of the Smith County Board of Supervisors. I think I'm speaking for every board member. We thank you for your service and our dedication and public, and true we are. We appreciate you so much.
I appreciate you. Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda. We have the Santa Zells update.
I'm not seeing Dale, and maybe we can hit the pause button if she comes, when she shows up.
Okay, uh, we'll skip item B, uh, C, Octagon House update, Mr. Eric Holt.
I appreciate you giving me a few minutes to update you on this project, and I think the last time that I stood here and spoke, this was just a restored landmark in our community. And now it's morphed into a multimillion-dollar project that will bring millions into the county. And it's great to hear that. It's great to see that, and it will be a work in progress until I'm dead and the next generation is dead. However, we started somewhere, and this is where we are today. We've worked extensively with Virginia Tech, particularly their Center for Economic and Community Engagement. They completed our feasibility study. We were awarded the prestigious Paul Bruin Grant through the Department of Historic Resources. That funding came through the National Park Service. As it stands right now, uh, once we receive those funds, then we can have this project open within six months to a year. Now, I say that because it won't be finished. It'll be a work in progress for quite a while. However, that will start bringing funds, and we know everything comes down to money. It truly does. But what are we gonna put with it? The funding that comes in through tourism, cultural events, those type things, by Phase Four, and that is several years away, is estimated to bring in at least one and a half million dollars per year for the local economy. That's not funds for the Octagon House. That's what it brings to all the other businesses through tourism, restaurants, those supportive businesses for venue events, those type things. It's grown from a local Smith County project to be a bill introduced on the general floor of the General Assembly in the State House in Richmond, also within the walls of the U.S. Capitol with our local senators and congressmen. So we've grown from a little discussion about a little project to something that is not only known regionally but outside this region. People no longer ask, "What is it?" They ask, "What are you doing?" So we are very happy to say that this project is no longer just a restored landmark for our usage and pleasure, but also pride, that it's a cultural experience center. It's not gonna be a place that you walk through once and you don't come back because there's nothing else to see. This was a growing, living entity that should provide and show the best of southwest Virginia right here in Smith County. It's a regional project. It's not just Smith County. However, we will benefit from it. Both economically, and those parts are with development of workforce, and also the tourism. We work closely with Virginia Tourism to help pull those funds and people into this area. I know there's a lot of discussion as far as what do we need here to help support that, whether it be restaurants, hotels, those type things, but everyone working together, and that's what I see over the last couple of years, especially with Amanda Livingston, who, and I'm gonna say she is probably the top person that I've worked with in this field. So we are very happy to have her. She's very knowledgeable. She's a go-getter, and she supports everything that the county has, and she pulls in what she can. But working closely with her and strategic planning for Smith County, we're growing. And I don't say that just for the Octagon House, but I say that for all these entities because we're finally working together. So I just wanted to give you those updates, let you know this is not a stagnant project. It does take time. This is now the eleventh year since I formed the foundation. And it's gonna continue to take time, but we want to know that we're already giving back. One thing that stood out to me, we had an event several weeks ago, actually about a month ago, and people that came in for that event, and it wasn't very well advertised from South Carolina for our event. So that tells me people are watching and they're already coming in. We may not see them on paper, but they're here. So we're doing our best to give back to the county. We always appreciate your support. You've supported us in the past. You've been part of this project, and we will always keep you updated because we want to represent the best of Smith County. So, thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Anyone have questions?
I, I just, don't give me a minute to speak. I, I just wanna thank you for being persistent. And, I mean, that's, that's one of the things, I mean, there, there's a lot of history in this county, and, and you know, it, it takes individuals a lot of time and a lot of effort and to see where this has come from, from, you know, just a dream, just spaghetti dinners to now, you know, being able to get a grant that is hopefully gonna be able to just make this an amazing attraction, not just for Smith County, but, you know, the entire state and everywhere else.
Right.
Just, I just wanna say thank you for staying on it, and, uh, every, every time I see you, that's the one thing I think about is the Octagon House. But, but that's, that's what it takes, and just thank you for, for doing what you're doing.
Well, I certainly appreciate that.
Checking it out when it's all done.
Hope you get to walk in soon. I appreciate that.
I concur to Mr. White's comments, and I'm gonna say, I appreciate your passion for it, and I think that's one of truly our treasures in Smith County, and I appreciate your passion for doing this.
Thank you. I appreciate the kind words.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, hold on. Back up just a second, and we're going back to our Santa Zells update. We have with us Dale Baldwin, Smith County Department of Social Services.
Hi, how's everybody? Okay, so I'm pleased to announce, right now we have thirty-two thousand dollars. Thanks to the generosity of a lot of the community, as well as brand-new sponsors and reoccurring sponsors like General Dynamics, who's a huge support for us. At this time, I think we are okay. We have worked very hard. We've raised funds. We have reached out to many communities, and even outside of this county, we've reached out and gotten support. So we are gonna be cutting it close, but I think we're gonna be okay.
Well, we appreciate you coming, and the other thing is, we appreciate you all doing this for, for this, you know, for these children of this county that need this support system. I think, I think everybody up here will say that if you, if you get an overload or something like that, please let us know.
Thank you. And I also wanted to share, um, the attorney that we're working with who has graciously volunteered their time. Um, his name is, I got his permission to announce it. It is Mr. my goodness, Paul Castle, Ottawa County. He's a wonderful G L here in our county, so, um, he has volunteered. We are still on the right track for that, and we're very excited, so.
Any timeframe for the, the, this is the five oh one C three status. Any timeframe for when that might happen?
Unfortunately not. The last update I got from him is he's got the papers, so we're just patiently waiting because it's a process you have to do through the state, and if I'm not mistaken, federal as well. It will, and it'll open a lot of doors, because a lot of people we've reached out to, um, they're not able to help us because we don't have that status. However, a lot of our community people do it outside of the business and kind of navigate those waters because they know what we do and why we do it. And we are up to two hundred and sixty-five children's referrals as of yesterday afternoon. December third. And I'm happy to announce that all of us have been sponsored right now. Yeah, so we've been working very hard. Um, it's a lot of work, um, matching and, you know, talking to the community, and we just got three new sponsors today, if I'm not mistaken. A lot of individuals have really come up, and some people that have done it in the past that weren't able to do it in previous years are coming back, and we, we love that, and we appreciate that so much.
I think we all appreciate you all's, uh, doing, doing this program and your own dying efforts, because I know how hard you all have worked with fundraising to get, because you knew you were sort of up against it this year, so we appreciate that greatly.
Well, thank you, and just be on the lookout. There's more fundraisers. We actually have cups that we're selling. Buddy Heath was supposed to be here, but he's away at a conference, so we do have those cups, and they're, we can get those out as soon as possible to you guys as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank y'all, and thank y'all for considering us. We, we, it's been a long road, but we, I think we're, I think we're okay. But it might not be pretty, but we'll make it. Thank y'all.
Okay, the next up, we have the Youth Ambassador Program. And I know in the flyers in the front of your folder, if you look at that, if you haven't already done so.
While they're walking up, I just want to say how excited I am, uh, with, since we've, um, since Maddie started, she's really hit the ground running trying to find new things and new creative ways to get people involved. And this is, this is a, another example of that, so I, I challenged her and Ellen to come and present to the board.
Um, so this Youth Ambassador Program, it started in many ways, uh, as me just scrolling on Facebook. Um, so with Phil, uh, their economic, economic development, uh, department, they also have a Youth Ambassador Program. Basically, it started very simply. They had a group of high school seniors who volunteered and helped out at their events. Um, we as Smith County, we don't have Smith County-specific events unless you're considering Rich Valley Fair. Um, and so we were kind of thinking to ourselves, well, we want more youth involved. It's been kind of a longstanding conversation. Um, we have some internships coming up next year to kind of hit that college population, so we're excited that we can host those, and those have already been posted and publicized. But we're really thinking about that high school population, and Ellen and I started talking, and really the vision for this program is what would we have wanted in high school? And so the, the main crux of this program is to find high school seniors that are interested in kind of taking the next step, in preparing for college and looking at like a real project you can walk away with. So it's an economic development project between Smith County and Marion. We have the support of South Saltville as well as Chilhawee. They're gonna help us with a lot of the communication, but we're gonna have three student ambassadors, and the goal is that each of them has a big event that they get to put on with the goal of having their fellow peers, the kids they go to school with, the kids they know from church, the kids they know in their community, to come out to the event. And so we're not only getting kids involved with working at the county and getting that life experience, you know, they're gonna have to interview, they're gonna have to answer, you know, application questions. It's gonna be, you know, kind of a step into like the real world, but also we're getting that interest from local students. So that's kind of the thought process behind that. We do have budgets set aside for it. It's gonna be, it's gonna be about two thousand dollars from supplemental, um, and it will be split between the three of them. They can choose if they want to do partner events, you know, maybe two of them just really get along and they want to do something together with their two communities, anything like that. But so, it's, it's gonna specifically fund whatever event they put on.
This sounds great. I'll tell you, I, I can see some real benefits of this program down the road, getting people involved in community service and community development and things. So I think this will be, I appreciate you all taking the initiative and getting this program started.
What can the board do to help you get started?
Thank you. Um, so if you're good with it, I have a post scheduled to go up on Facebook on Monday. Um, so if you're good, I will post that and we'll get it running. Um, we're hoping to kind of close applications mid-December, right before kids get really distracted and so not have to go on holiday. Um, so hopefully, and we're trying to push it through the government teachers as well, since, you know, there'd probably be some kids who would want to come and work at the county. Um, but you have flyers. Please feel free to share them, the QR code that goes straight to the application. I think, I think that'll be live, but it will at least be live by Monday where kids can just straight apply to us. Um, and encourage them, if you know a great kid, you can be their letter of rec. Um, they just need like some sort of reference from an adult that knows them, that's not like a family member. So, uh, yeah, if you know great kids, please let them know. I think, I think it'd be really cool.
Awesome job, Maddie. I'm just gonna tell you. Not to, not to. I don't need that, but, uh, he kept my microphone on. But with that being said, though, I've, I've thought for a long time, we, to engage the youth, how can we engage the youth? I mean, if you look up here, Courtney's the youngest one, and, uh,
He looks pretty good.
But, uh, but, uh, well, Roscoe's the second youngest. But, uh, we, when we look out here, we do not see a lot of young people, and it's, and that's one of the things, and I've got, you know, teenage daughter, trying to figure out how to get them engaged for future because somebody has to, has to be ready to support this community and take it into the next fifty, hundred, hundred and fifty years, whatever, you know, when we're long gone, so I, I do appreciate that, Rob. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and Ellen's such a great help to this. You know, I don't know that I could manage three high schoolers on my own. So Ellen's gonna help me out and we're, make sure we spread. We think two V three will be a really good ratio. Um, so yeah, we're really excited.
I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Um, you're talking about three. Is that one from each high school?
That's the goal. Is, yeah, so the goal is kind of, they're an ambassador, they're representative of their community. They know what their peers want. I don't, I don't know what high schoolers are into. Um, I'm a little bit removed from that, and so they know they're kind of representing. It's kind of a, a baby test of, you know, representing their own community, but in an event form, you know, something fun.
Well, I, I will say, um, I've talked to Sean and others at times that there is a major benefit to this, and, uh, my son being a page at the Senate on a, you know, that, that's a state level, but the things he learned and was able to bring back was very impressive in the program. And hopefully this is something, even along those lines, to a point that gets people involved in local government. But thank you for moving this forward.
Thank y'all.
And, uh, yeah, I think it'd be great. I think we've got a good system here. I wanted to get a recommendation, and, uh, I think our principals and probably our high school government teachers would be excellent.
Absolutely. And it's open to homeschool students as well. Um, you know, we're pushing it through the high schools, but they're absolutely still in the running, so.
Thank you all so much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Okay, we have no public hearings tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll move on to the financial status report.
Uh, thank you, and Mr. Sturgill, if you'll look under your red tab in your additional binder, you'll find the, um, Smith County Financial Report ending October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five that shows the county with a bank and C D balance of seven million eight hundred twenty-five thousand four hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-three cents. Further on down, it shows the balances in, uh, some of the other funds with, um, a total of thirteen million ninety-five thousand fifty-two dollars and fifteen cents. In addition, if you look under the orange tab, you'll see what used, you used to call the Treasurer's Accountability Report is now called a account total trial balance subsidiary ledger, but it's what, it is the Treasurer's Accountability Report. On further is, uh, under the yellow tab is a C D and bank balance annual comparison, some charts that Sean has. Do you want to talk about those for a minute?
I just tried to track where we were, um, this time last year, over the last five years, uh, just to compare. Uh, and you'll see a lot of that in there, the lines that are higher. Those are the COVID days, and we had the CARES Act funds and the ARPA funds that, and the S R funds for that matter, that kind of elevated, um, our, our bank accounts for a little while, but we're back to, those are all gone, so we're back to normal.
Back then in twenty twenty, we were starting. And under the green tab, um, there's a, these are admin reports, so they're a little different looking than what we've had in the past, and I'm quite honest with you. I'm still working with them to see what works best for our meeting, but under the green tab, there is a monthly revenue report, and I would just encourage you to, to look under the current revenue tab column and the year-to-date revenue column to find where we are at this point as far as revenue collections throughout the report.
Oh, I will say that I know Mr. Atkins wants a balance sheet, and as soon as we get everything finalized through Edmunds by April, I think we'll be able to build that, but since we're in two financial software still, until the treasurer and commissioner go online, it's, it's hard to build that yet, but there, we're gonna, we have the plan and, and goal of making that happen for Mr. Atkins.
And we're, we're working through these new reports to see what we can learn from them. And then on the blue tab is an expenditure summary, which, uh, by, by fund, just to review those. And I, I hope that next month maybe we'll be able to get them to you sooner before the meeting, so you have some time to, to look at those before you come in.
Is there a way to provide these reports in Excel?
Some of them, yes. Yes, they do. They do convert to Excel.
Read through it.
Well, to, and to analyze.
Yep, I agree.
I ran into one today that I couldn't print to Excel, but I'm gonna find a way to convert it, so that, that looks that in the future. And that's, uh, all I have.
May I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
The blue, excuse me. The one in front of the blue sheet, I like the fact that it put the comments in the dollar bills.
Yes.
Yes.
Over on the yellow sheet, I was gonna comment, or I guess the red sheet. I get lost when there's no, uh, I get lost when there's no, uh, when there's no commas.
Right.
It shouldn't be that hard for this new system to go ahead and put that in for us.
Little things.
Yeah. Little things to make the whole ledger readable now.
And I, and I was also gonna ask on the, uh, monthly revenue, the items that currently are zeros. I know that this is early in this. Will those eventually populate with something and mean something? Or if those are always zeros, can we take them out?
You can generate a report that says, if, you notice at the top, I've got included accounts with zero activity. I've got no. So I'm not sure how we get that. So that, at this point, there shouldn't be anything on there that doesn't have something in there.
I'm just talking about like the, the lines down there.
And anticipated and current canceled.
I think we can print that as you stated in Excel and we can just hide those.
Okay.
Hide those lines.
You know me, it'd be difficult.
Yeah, well.
And we can add the commas then, too.
Hopefully.
And I will say, just to let you know, that green tab, that's the revenues. There's no more minuses. You know, minuses are bad now in the new system, whereas AS four hundred minus was a good. It's kind of oxymoronic.
Yeah.
I'll just mess you up if I take my, if I take my copy home and study it.
No, no.
I'll get back to you.
Absolutely.
I just have one quick question. The, uh, as far as like, uh, people pay their, pay their real estate taxes monthly, does that go in that month's revenue or does it? It does?
It does.
Okay. That's, I was just curious. All right. Does anyone else have any questions about that, about the financial report? I guess we need a motion to approve it.
Don't move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Next, we have payment of invoices.
Pay the bills.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Any, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizens' time. Just a reminder, uh, citizens' time, we have a three-minute time limit. And anyone, do we have anyone who signed up to speak?
I think I'm.
I know Rose did.
Okay, Rose, will you come on? State your name and address for our records.
Okay. I'm Rose Lycans and my address is eight twelve Chincopin Road in Marion. And I'm here representing the library this evening to give you your regular update on how things are going. The Board of Trustees will be meeting on Thursday, November the twentieth at five thirty here in Marion, the Copenhagen Room. And as always, everyone is invited. We have a ton of stuff going on in programs. As I hope you all might have noticed, both in our Facebook posts and our website, so I'll just mention a few of them to bring them to your attention. Um, we now have homeschool programs at all three locations in Marion, Saltville, and Chilhauwe. In Marion, we do it every week with a homeschool storytime. Chilhauwe and Saltville, they're doing once a month. Um, we had one in Saltville today, um, and it was with four H and it was hand sewing, making little hand sewing projects. Um, Saltville is also having a coding series, um, and this month it's with little Cubetto robots. Um, and the higher education center down in Abingdon is coming up and doing the programs for us. So this month, we have it on the twentieth in Saltville and on the twenty first in Chilhauwe. So those have been very popular for us. Our chair yoga in Chilhauwe every Monday morning is very popular. We've got about fifteen senior citizens who show up and do yoga every Monday morning, sitting in chairs to accommodate, um, particular needs that folks have. Um, our mahjong in Marion has taken off. We have a group of folks meeting every Wednesday morning to play mahjong in Marion. Couple of weeks ago, we had visitors from New York who were here for a court appointment and they had time to spare. So they looked on the website to find things that were going on. So they dropped in to play mahjong with our group that's playing in Marion. Um, and we are, it, it's been so popular that we've got another training class coming December eighth and ninth, um, to get a group for the evening. Right, our group right now wants to play in the mornings, but we have folks who would like to play in the evenings. So we're gonna start a second group and we've got another round of training coming. Um, we have, let's see, oh, Not a Book Club. We started a program called the Not a Book Club because a lot of folks find book clubs to be a little too much to keep up with. So we're doing a series of four programs where we're gonna show a movie on the night of the discussion. We'll publish the name of the book in advance. And so you can read the book if you would like, but you can also just show up and watch the movie and then talk about it. So in December, it's on the eighteenth and it's, the book is Florence Foster Jenkins and the movie is Florence Foster Jenkins. So, um, that we have one last month, it was the Abingdon boarding house murder and it was very popular. The author showed up unexpectedly, um, of the, the book. And so that was fun for everybody. Um, and we continue with all of our other standard programs, the weekly storytimes and the teen Tuesdays and Lego nights. So we're busy and we're getting a lot of participation from the community. Our big news is on December first, we're gonna have the ribbon cutting of our new Makerspace in Chilhauwe. It's gonna be called the Makery. Um, and so we hope y'all will come out and join us. And we'll start in December offering programs where people can come in and learn how to use the different pieces of equipment. In December, we're gonna start with the three D printers. And then we're going to also do some work with the cricket to make some Christmas gift tags and envelopes. And then we're gonna do some sublimation printing to make, um, designs that people can print on a mug. So that, we'll start with that in December and we'll move on to more stuff in January. So I think it's gonna be very exciting. We've already got people calling. When can I make an appointment to use the later sir cutter? And when can I come in and cut my large vinyl? So people have heard about us. We've had calls from Withville, calls from Bristol. So a lot of people are interested. Um, we continue to work with the school system. I was out in Chilhauwe, um, on the twenty seventh, meeting with all the ninth grade English classes to talk about information literacy. We hung out in the hallways of Marion Middle School during parent teacher conferences and signed up about half a dozen people with library cards and taught some people how to use our databases while we were hanging out in the hallway. So that was a lot of fun. Um, our friends groups are very active. The Marion Friends have had a lot of book sales and raised a lot of money this year. Their last book sale of the year is gonna be Saturday, December the sixth. Um, the Friends in Chilhauwe are also extremely active. They're meeting, both groups are meeting next Tuesday night. So I have to flip a coin which one I'm gonna go to. Um, we've also hosted several regional meetings for librarians. So in September, I hosted all the, um, library directors from all of Southwest Virginia. We had fourteen people show up in the room and we had two on screen in a hybrid meeting. And then last Friday, we hosted children's librarians from all over Southwest Virginia, Tennessee, and North Carolina. So we've brought a lot of folks in, um, be an active part of that community. So I'll stop talking now and see if y'all have any questions for me.
What time is the Makerspace?
It's at six P M.
Could you send us an email reminder?
Of course.
Couple of days before that, that'd be great.
Of course.
And, uh, and I, I just want to thank you and the school system for the amazing job you do, working with our librarians and the programs. Uh, I mean, you all are such a great asset to our communities and our schools. And I thank you for all the PD work you do with them every summer before we start school back. So.
Thank you, thank you. Um, they are wonderful partners and we thoroughly enjoy spending time with them. Ms. Tracy from here in Marion, every time she goes into school to do a storytime, she'll start in one classroom and then the other teachers will see her and say, do you have time to drop in in my, my class too? So, and so they love to, they love, you know, seeing the kids and catching up. So it's great.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have anyone else signed up?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll close citizens' time and we will move on to old business. Committee reports and recommendations. We start with the Parks and Recreation Committee. Mr. Ratliff is the chair. Good for him. Would you like to cover that for me?
Be happy to. Yes, sir. So the, the Parks and Rec Committee met last week and had two items that they discussed. First one was in, um, I'm gonna do this backwards. Uh, the, the football year-end report, um, just for this past, um, program year for the football program in Marion. Uh, it was a very successful program, uh, increase in volunteers, increasing in, um, children that participated. The first, second grade team had a season record of nine and two and won the, won the championship. The third, fourth grade team went undefeated and won the championship. And the fifth, sixth grade team went five and five and made it into the playoffs through the second round. Uh, seventy-four players, uh, football players and seventy-three cheerleaders. Uh, and a lot of folks were asking, what are we gonna do next? Um, so that was a, a interesting, a great report. No action was taken by the committee. That was just informational. The next item that did have some action was the proposed adult softball program. Uh, Mr. Smart did provide an update, uh, to the, um, committee, uh, that he's looking to create, uh, recreate the adult softball program in the county for, um, high school and beyond. Um, he did state that there's some, uh, a, a good list of rules and, um, programs that they can abide by for mixed gender teams. Um, we did talk about where we, that the games would be played. Uh, one option that was discussed was the old Adwoal Field, uh, that where the town of Marion used to have theirs. Um, their program or the ta- town of Chilhauwe Park, I guess the field behind McDonald's would be the one. Um, the, um, committee discussing Mr. Stur- Mr. Sturgill agreed that staff should inquire about the availability and condition of the field, of the Adwoal Field, since there was a history of adult, uh, softball being played there. Uh, Mr. Smart noted that the Parks and Recreation Program Coordinator Julius Feinberger would be the one to oversee the adult softball program and, and move it forward. Uh, after discussion, uh, Mr. Sturgill made a motion to recommend the board direct county staff to negotiate use options for Adwoal Field or Chilhauwe Field. If the Adwoal Field is not available for use by the Adult League Softball Program and it was seconded by Mr. Ratliff, unanimously approved as a recommendation from committee.
Okay.
Uh, Richardson family.
The Richards is on it, Adwoal, uh, the town of Chilhauwe owns that one. Is there, would there be any conflict with the town of Chilhauwe?
I don't think so. I know they have some church leagues, they've had some church league softball there and the JV baseball team is practiced there.
The eighth grade.
Eighth grade baseball.
Was back, practiced there over now and then. Um.
Just general knowledge, if lights work in Chilhauwe, they don't win at Adwoal.
So easier to probably get, get started.
Probably less of an investment.
Yep.
Among other reasons.
Yep. And, um, I'm happy to reach out to them. I think it'd be, it'd be worth, um, getting some participation by the Chilhauwe side. You know, we've been doing a lot on the county side for, in Marion. It'd be nice to, like the soccer program, to spread this out beyond town boundaries or the Marion theater.
I think, I think the initially what he was looking at is starting it through a co-ed league.
Yes.
A co-ed league.
Yep. And the program that he, that Mr. Smart was talking about, um, required at least ten players, four of which, at a minimum of four, had to be female so that you didn't have loaded, you know, the, the long ball hitters, uh, for the teams, but.
I, I know there used to be, and I don't like to steal that way in co-ed, because I used to play in co-ed tournaments. The big, you had to bat opposite handed, you had to hit a ball. It was about that big a round. It was full of solid dust. And actually, where they played a lot of those tournaments, that little field past Marion Elementary out there on the left, which is a girls' softball field, that's where they played, that's where they played games.
That was one that I thought about as an option, but, um, it's fairly easy to hit it over that fence. The, the, the beauty of Chilhauwe is their, the fences, or if there was a fence, it's really the, the creek or the river. Before you, you lose a ball.
They, they have, well, they, let me say, they used to have a movable fence that they put up there.
I think it's snowfall, yeah.
They used to put it so you didn't run into the light poles up there.
What's the dimensions of the Chilhauwe field? The, the homerun dimensions?
Uh.
Right at three hundred.
Right at three hundred?
Right at three hundred, three twenty-five.
So just thinking outside the lines here for a minute, one of the growing divisions in Little League is what they call fifty-seventy. Instead of going from the sixty-foot diamond to the ninety-foot diamond, they go to a modified between them for the thirteen-year-olds. If we had a field that was what we would refer to as a fifty-seventy diamond in Chilhauwe, then we could probably leverage Glade, Chilhauwe, Saltville, and Marion to play that intermediate, intermediate division for, under the Little League flagship.
One, one of the things that we've been trying to stay away from are if, if a town, one of the towns had a program that was successful or a private group had this successful, um, we didn't want to overstep. So all the youth programs are covered countywide, but we can certainly talk to, to Chilhauwe about the fifty-seventy option.
What I'm leaning towards is if we have the ability to just roll out a temporary mound at the proper distance for fifty-seventy and have the bases dropped in, offer them the use of it with, with restrictions to, to let them home grow their own program and not, and not have the county run it. I, I'm not saying to run it, just if we're developing the field for this, might be a minimal expense, but also offer another level of recreation.
Develop it with flexibility.
With flexibility, yes. Not, not solely for that, but just, and, and not the county to run it per se.
True.
Be happy to take. Let's go with you.
Okay. All right. Uh, do I have a motion to approve this report?
All right. It, the committee report comes as a motion. So just, you know, action.
Do I have a motion, uh, do I have a, a motion to prove it?
We need a motion to prove it, do we?
No, we don't. Just that full vote.
Full vote.
Okay.
It comes as a motion.
All right. We have a motion?
Come here.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that's all for the Parks and Rec Committee.
Okay. Next up is Ordnance Committee, and I will defer to Mr. Ratliff.
Be happy to. So.
As the chair.
We had a few items to discuss. The first item was jury pay, um, expense pay, um, donations. So I had been approached by our, um, circuit court clerk, Mr. Graham, about, um, the, the potential for jurors to donate their, their expense pay because he gets that, uh, questioned quite a bit. Um, we discussed that in the committee and had a draft ordinance. Uh, Mr. Atkins did ask if citizens could be given a list of options for their expense pay to be donated toward. And Mr. Graham had already, as, uh, almost a step ahead with an example, um, expense pay donation sheet, maybe with a, uh, an option or two back to be added, um, to it, which would allow the Chil- the citizens to, um, choose where the money would be donated. Um, it, the, the, the goal was to help the, to benefit the court system, whether it's transit for citizens or, um, the juror, um, fund or funds for, for food or what have you for the, for the juries. Since we do have more jury trials, um, these days. Um, I did note that if the board was willing to, to move forward, since this is an ordinance, um, that the next item would be to, um, schedule a public hearing, uh, for the, for the draft ordinance. Mr. Atkins made a motion to recommend the board schedule a public hearing on December eleventh at five P M or shortly thereafter to consider the adoption of the juror expense pay ordinance, um, which was seconded by Mr. Ratliff and unanimously approved as a committee recommendation. And Mr. Graham's here to answer any questions if you have any.
Any more heavy questions, Mr.?
So Mr. Graham's fund's not on that list, is it?
Right? No. His name will not be on the list.
I'll tell you, I think this is a great idea. Absolutely a great idea.
Well, you do take the money that, and it's donated to, to some example.
So jurors are entitled to, uh, expense pay of fifty dollars for each appearance. And we always have a handful of people who say, I don't want this. Would, why don't you just keep it? And, uh, or, or do something with it. And so this gives them a way to support. Uh, the, the entities that might receive this have to be connected to the court system by the statute. Uh, ancillary, providing services that benefit the court system. So, um, you know, I was establishing a jury fund. Um, we have folks in your neck of the woods who have said they don't have transportation. So how, how can I get them to the court? How can I eliminate that barrier to their jury service? If I have a fund that I can pay the cab or the, the Marion Transit, uh, bus, we'll do that some. But coordinating that, when you don't know when the jury trial's gonna be over, is sometimes hard. But, um, it gives us a way to provide for some of the.
The general fund for.
For jury expenses, yes. And we, I buy them donuts for the juries and things like that.
They done me that way one time. Can you remember that?
Did, did I?
No, I, I was on jury duty. I was on, up the jury duty.
Uh-oh.
Oh, yeah. I left the house, come down one oh seven dirt to Taco Place. I looked on interstate, I always do. Traffic moving, here come the train. I was running late already. So I turned down to the bank real quick there. Come out down there at Valley. Okay, got all number laid, booked. Okay, got all numbered, laid, booked on down the road, missed all that. Got down there to Pop Miller's old place. We used to buy beer all the time. Blue lights lit me up. Okay, there was a police officer sitting there in front of the mall at the high school. I waved at him on the way back. Yeah, fine feller, told him. Stop, he said, you know why I pulled you over? I said, no. I said, what can I do for you? Can I help you something? Said, license refresh and all this stuff. It was Officer Smith, his first day on the job. Gave me a ticket for two hundred dollars, thirty-six and a twenty-five. The lights was flashing at the school zone. Well, I got on eleven there. Side of Bill Levens's old place. The sign is right here. The road's right here. I didn't even. Didn't even see the sign. So I ended up paying two hundred dollars to come to jury duty and you got a big kick out. Cause he told everybody there for orientation. He said, Mr. Paul got a ticket coming up.
I, I'm afraid the, uh, the juror fund would not cover a two hundred dollars. For future jurors.
I always get a life, I live, I live in over that. I've been friends ever since. I deserved it. I was doing thirty-six, but.
We appreciate your conscientious service about that.
I agree. I'll go along with it.
Alright, we have a recommendation and the committee informed a motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, John. Uh, next item we discussed was a line of duty funeral expense, um, options. Uh, Mr. Atkins stated that currently the board approves requests to cover the funeral expenses of individuals that are killed in a line of duty as determined by V R S. Uh, he noted that an allowance, this was an allowance by state code, but not a requ- a requirement, and requested the board formalize the practice as an ordinance which would allow the public hearing and citizen comment. Mr. Sturgill inquired about how a line of duty death is determined, to which I stated that the state investigates the deaths and determines if the, um, if it qualifies as a line of duty death as defined by the Line of Duty Act in the Code of Virginia. Um, I stated that if the practice was formalized as an ordinance, it does create expectations for how the expenses will be paid in the future and clears up any misunderstandings. And noted that if the committee was willing to proceed, the next step would be to hold a public hearing for the draft ordinance. Um, recommended for December eleventh. Uh, following discussion, Mr. Atkins made a motion to recommend scheduling a public hearing for December eleventh, twenty twenty-five to consider the adoption of the line of duty funeral, uh, expense ordinance. The motion was taken by Mr. Ratliff and unanimously approved as a committee recommendation.
Alright, uh, do we have any further discussion? Alright, it is a recommendation from the committee, um, so. Yes, yes, sir.
It sounds sort of silly to do this, but I didn't want to come up to that point in time where we, all of a sudden we had two or three in a row and I don't want that to ever happen, but it takes it out of our seven people up here having to make that decision. It goes to the general public. And, uh, I, it just, it's better that way. That way everyone knows what the criteria is and what's going on. And, uh, I'm in no way against it. I just think it formalizes it and helps, helps us. And the public gets a chance to make a comment on yes, we should do it or no, we shouldn't. And that's, that's why I pushed it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Anyone else? Alright, hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
And the third item the ordinance committee discussed was the proposed animal abuse registry. Uh, Mr. The Commonwealth Attorney, Mr. Levens, shared the draft, um, animal abuse registry ordinance, which was reviewed, had been reviewed by, uh, County Attorney, County Administrator. Mr. Levens, um, directed the committee to section ten, line two, which shows, had been updated from the board supervisors may authorize a registration fee to the board of supervisors authorizes a registration fee, which makes it automatical- automatically applicable. Uh, Mr. Levens stated that animal control officers would be tasked with visiting the homes each year, um, to make sure their address hadn't changed. Mr. Sturgill, uh, asked about the current animal cruelty cases, um, if they were for all domi- all for domestic animals. Uh, Mr. Levens stated that the fourteen existing animal abuse offender cases which spread out over the last fifteen years were indeed domest- against domestic animals and none pertain to livestock. Um, again, I noted that if the committee wanted to move forward, the next step would be to schedule a public hearing. Following discussion, Mr. Atkins made a motion to recommend the board approve or schedule a public hearing for December eleventh, twenty twenty-five to consider the adoption of the animal abuse registry ordinance. And the motion was taken by Mr. Ratliff and unanimously approved as a committee recommendation.
Okay, alright, we have a committee recommendation. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And that's all we have for ordinance committee.
Okay, uh, next up, we have the Personnel Committee and I once again will refer to Mr. Ut.
Absolutely. Um, we did, we only had one item for discussion for the ordinance committee that was dealing with the Appalachian Center for Hope, uh, Executive Director request. Um, I if, uh, informed the committee that the Appalachian Center for Hope is working through the hiring process for an executive director. And Mr. Graham, uh, who's the Chair of the A C H Board, uh, stated that health insurance packages were incredibly expensive and difficult. Uh, inquired about a partnership with the county. Um, I, I had reminded the board of, that we could provide the applicant with the, uh, county benefits package if they act, if we act as a fiscal agent, identical to what we do for the Smith Animal Rescue, Ry Valley Water Authority and the Smith County Tourism Association. Um, I did clarify that the county does cover all the costs related to the position salary and is reimbursed, um, by the agency this, in this case, A C H, either on a monthly or a quarterly basis, probably on a quarterly is what we would, what we've done in the past. Um, Mr. Joey Carrico, who's also on the board, noted the arrangement would, um, would not require the county to supervise the additional staff and that the executive director would report to the A C H Board rather than the county. Um, following the further discussions, uh, Mr. Paris made a motion to recommend the board agree to allow the county to serve as fiscal agent for the Appalachian Center for Hope's executive director position, following a template of the previous fiscal aid agree, agent agreements, and authorize the county administrator to execute all acts necessary subject to county attorney review and approval. A motion was taken by Mr. Atkins and comes to you approved as a committee recommendation. And again, Mr. Graham's here to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, we have a recommendation from the committee. Does he want to have any questions for Mr. Graham in this?
I don't know if I have it for Mr. Graham, but for us, uh, he mentioned monthly or part of, uh, semi or, um, quarterly. This doesn't lock it in any other way right now, does it?
No, that's it. I think the other turn, the other agreements we have are quarterly reimbursements that we bill out on a quarterly basis.
Reason I ask that, and I don't mean to pick on John, but I like to. As it's getting started and getting their cash flowing up and running, I almost think we need to look at monthly. And then once, once we have, once they know how their cash is flowing, then go to, uh, quarterly. Because if you don't, that quarter, I've been in organizations where that quarterly payment just absolutely floors you. And monthly, you, you can work it in, you can make your budget work, but if you, if you've not made it work for three months and all of a sudden you owe, it gets to be hard. But, but once you've gotten into habit of that monthly payment, it's not hard to hang on to that cash and pay it quarterly. It's just a little thing that I've run into over my years of accounting, so, uh.
We'll be glad to keep it open to whatever.
That's a helpful suggestion.
And that's what I, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying one way, y'all need to decide, but I just, it's something to keep in mind.
Sure.
Any, anyone else? Is there, uh, is there anything that we need to, as far as the motion, recommendation for the committee?
Recommendation's already there, yeah. Basically authorized me to, to execute the agreement.
Okay, alright, we have a recommendation for the committee. Uh, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll have, motion carries.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I take one moment of personal privilege to just thank you for your support for this e- effort? Um, this began several years ago and, uh, there have been no supporters more, uh, concrete and established and, uh, stalwart than, than you are. Uh, this board has been supportive from the get-go and, uh, as a matter of fact, I, I, as I was proposing this idea to Mr. Ut, um, I said, now, look, Sean, you, you've been super supportive of this and I want to pave the way for you to say, no way. Um, and, uh, he said, well, sure, I think we can probably do that. Let, let, let's, let's explore it more. Um, i- i- in other words, you just continually, uh, are, uh, impress me and surprise me with your ability, uh, and commitment to this. I, I, I really appreciate, and not, not just me. Uh, this is gonna help restore hope and healing to people who are struggling with addictions and we need that help in our community. So thank you for being part of that and proactive.
We thank you for your passion in doing this because not many people would go to the length and effort that you have in order to work on this much-needed facility, for sure.
Uh, we, we hope to be, have a certificate of an occupancy by the end of the month, uh, by the end of the year, not the end of the month. By the end of the year, so you, you'll all get grand invitations to come tour.
In case y'all didn't notice, he, Mr. Graham's trying to get Santa Claus to come a little bit early.
I'm not above that.
I'll, I'll tell you, I'll, I'll say this. Being in that building pretty regular before this ever even come about, I would have never imagined what it is now. It is absolutely beautiful. But just knowing the time and effort and, and, uh, with the work group and everything, all the people that's involved and it's hard for me sometimes with my schedule to join in, but, but, the, just the, the drive of the people that, that want to make this happen. It, it's absolutely amazing. And then to walk over, I can't wait to see the best product, product. It's, I'm really excited about that, but great job.
Again, thank you.
Okay, next, we have, uh, Public Safety Committee. Mr. Widener?
I'll give you a break. Thank you. The, uh, Public Safety Committee admit, um, and, uh, the main item, uh, for discussion was the radio project update for, uh, the county. This, uh, just so you're aware, includes, uh, law enforcement, fire, E M S and the school system. Uh, Mr. Crawford stated the department continues to make state progress through radio assisted project. As this update is provided to ensure all remain informed, the implementation timeline has been adjusted with the project now scheduled for the spring of two thousand twenty-six. Completion due to Motorola's inability to complete the required testing before the foliage impacts coverage assessments. During recent reviews, the department identified several issues within the system that were not included in the original proposal and did not meet the required specifications. Notable, a single point of failure was discovered at dispatch despite Motorola's documentation stating that no such vulnerability would exist. Mr. Crawford explained that this concern was formally addressed in their calls to the county, including improvements necessary for interoper- interoperability with Washington County. Uh, Mr. Widener asked what financial return the county could expect to help offset the radio project costs, stating that the county is purchasing the equipment and contributing significant work and expertise. There needs to be consideration of cost sharing from participating agencies. Mr. Ut added, when the project initially began, budget planning included all work performed and that they reviewed call volumes within town limits to establish a proportional percentage. Uh, Mr. Widener emphasized the importance of clearly communicating to the departments that some installations cannot proceed due to capability issues and ensuring agencies understand these reasons. No action taken at this time. Just to elaborate on this, so the main thing was just getting an update because the, the, the timeframe has been pushed because of different situations that has come up. Um, and, and some of these that, that has really been out of control of Motorola and or us. Um, so trying to be as transparent as possible, the biggest thing of discussion in this was just making sure that, um, all stakeholders involved with all the agencies, we're just making sure that they are, uh, you know, kept up to date with all the information that is, uh, being provided on this so they can understand the actual timeline, uh, what, what's going on at that time, uh, prior to that, as far as installs and, and, and so forth for vehicles and, and other equipment. Do, do we know what the contract completion date is, other than what they're proposing? The actual, the, the current contract is August twenty six. Okay. Twenty-six, but I think they're gonna be done early, uh, early summer, late spring. So just, just to, uh, in, in case there's any questions out there to, to answer, um, why, why this is going on so long, is they have that completion date that they have up, up to August to complete by the contract. So, uh, as long as they're done by then, they're, they're meeting their, uh, their side of the deal and, and hopefully we'll be able to just have, have a better system all the way around for all of our first responders and, and, and the schools, so. That's all I have.
I, I just like, we talked the other day about monthly meetings and it, even if we have to do a virtual, cause I know a lot of people involved in this are probably irreplaceable, you know, because of service, but a virtual meeting, we're just doing fifteen, twenty minutes, saying this is where we are, this is what's going, to keep the misinformation from floating around. And I know we get hit with a lot of questions and stuff where people just don't know. So I think if we could, if we could somehow have those and, like I said, uh, if you, and I think that would, that would help and also help on our end, on the others people's end to make sure they're doing what they need to do to be ready, so.
Well, it would, it would cut down on a lot of the, uh, unnecessary information going around that.
Yes.
That, you know, rumors and things like that because you hear one thing's an issue, um, but it's maybe something completely different. That, just that way everybody's on the same page.
And we'll, we'll make sure to, for that monthly meeting, invite the, the Pete, the law enforcement, the, the fire departments, everybody. Uh, so that even if they don't have anything to add, they can listen in and just get the updates, yeah.
We appreciate that. Alright, any, any further discussion? Let's see, that's, there's no, there's no action, are you taking that? Alright, moving on, uh, Budget Committee, Mr. Atkins. And he defers to Mr. Ut.
Yep, I'll take it. Um, Budget Committee did a whole meeting last week. Uh, first item we discussed was requests for opioid abatement, um, our direct distribution funds. These are the funds that come directly to the, the county and not through the, uh, through the state. First item was Isaiah one seventeen house that's being built, uh, to, uh, serve Washington Bristol and Smith Counties, um, to provide a home for children who have been removed from their homes to wait for placement, um, with a foster family or similar arrangement. Ms. Harrison, who is the location leader, stated that, um, Isaiah one seventeen is authorized recipient of op- of the opioid abatement authorities' funds. They, she did get that certification from the state, which helps us a lot. Uh, Mr. Sturgill asked if the organization had supported any childrens from Smith County yet. And Ms. Harrison responded that even though they don't have a house built, uh, specifically, uh, to, to address the needs that they do have, they have, um, supported children in, from Smith County. Mr. Widener asked about the capacity limits for the proposed house, uh, which will be, uh, Ms. Harrison responding in a perfect world. Uh, they only serve one, one case at a time or one family at a time, but they do have the capacity for four children per room plus pull-out couch for, um, others to stay on. Um, and, uh, let's see. Uh, Mr. Widener asked if there was a need to expand the one seventeen house capacity that's being built. And, uh, Ms. Harrison did say that at this time she didn't think so, but there's some options for the future. Um, I did recommend that the board or the committee consider, um, a donation. And even though they didn't come with an amount, I had recommended forty thousand dollars, um, of the, uh, opioid direct distribution funds uh, to help finish the construction of the house and encourage other localities to match that amount, uh, with, from their own alignment. Those localities being Washington County and Bristol. Uh, following discussion, Mr. Widener made a motion to recommend the board approve granting Isaiah one seventeen house of Smith, Washington Br- and Bristol with forty thousand dollars in opioid. With forty thousand dollars in opioid abatement authority, dis- direct distribution funds and to aid in the construction operations of the regional house. Uh, Mr. Sturgill did second the motion and it comes to you as a committee recommendation.
Okay. We have a committee recommendation and this does qualify for expenditure in the.
Yes, it does.
Distribution of funds. I think this is a much, much needed thing.
Absolutely.
That, and, uh, for us and for DSS and things. So, uh. Any further discussion on this?
Yes, I would, I would like to say something.
Sure, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So, I, I'm in one hundred percent agreeance with anything we can do to support this, uh. Uh, the, the Isaiah one seventeen house. I do however, want us to still pursue, um, and possibly even through them to expand up this way.
I'll see.
I, I, I want, I want this here. This is a great start, but I want it here. We need that. I, and, and. It don't, it don't matter to me how many they say we have at a time or, or, you know, they want to do one at a time. Well, you don't know what, you know as well as anybody, what that number's gonna be at any given moment. So, I would love to see up on this end, at least something thought about in the near future.
I won't let it go. Thank you.
And that'll, that'll keep me from continuing bringing it up in supervisor comment. I will. I, I may still say something about it. Absolutely.
Going back to the, uh, financials again, uh, we don't have a particular line in our general ledger, do we?
We do. So, we, um, these funds come in on a, on a annual basis. I think the current balance is just at, right at three hundred thousand.
Just under two nine, two hundred ninety-two thousand eight hundred twenty-three dollars and thirty cents.
Yeah, and, and we're getting ready to get another, our next allotment, um, pay it in. So, we have funds to, that we need to start spending.
What's that account called?
It should be, uh, under eighteen oh ninety or nineteen oh one oh.
OAA direct distribution. On the green.
I'm all for it too, by the way. Just wanna make sure we, we're good to go.
Well, I, I will, I will say too, um. Attending some things throughout the community, you know, there's, there, there's a lot.
Top of the pay six.
Yeah.
Top of the pay six.
I, I think there's a lot that we can tie this to, to help with, um. With, with a lot of either agencies or, um, nonprofits that are, that are helping. Either with the children. The children was my main thing because it, it just, you know, we have all these programs for adults, which is great, but there's. We just don't have anything for the kids that are. And I think this is a great start to start putting some of that, towards that, but. I want to say it here.
We don't have it in a fund by itself, so it's.
Yeah, oh yeah, separate fund this stuff. Yeah, um, the, the auditor accounts set up, uh, we actually had it set up in a different fund and we had to move things around to fol- to follow the auditors.
I don't agree.
Just so we can track it then.
The sixty-eight thousand we just received, but there's, there's a total of, uh, just two ninety-two, two, ninety thousand off.
Changing subjects a little bit, I think we're all in agreement on these two items. Battered women and children right now. It used to be, we didn't have that available in Smith County either. You have to go to another county and I'm not saying which one is for that reason. But we need to put more money and time into that too. It's a problem.
I, I think it's all, it's all, e- everything, yes. And, and, you know, we, we see it in, in, in our jobs and. Of course, these two sitting right here, they, they, uh, in their careers and, and everything they, uh, are involved in, they. See the need for it too. And, and it's great having things that's sort of, I guess, sort of regional or, you know. A couple of counties involved, but there's things that's just not, you know, it's not very easily accessible at that very moment.
Yeah, yeah.
Sometimes that's gonna sway somebody from trying to proceed that. So. Somebody from here may not want to do that, okay? Even, even a child going into care. That's a very traumatic time for them. And then, they probably never even been out of the county, so they, as far as they know, they don't know. You know, so I, I, I agree. We need to definitely work together with all these groups and, and try to make some things happen.
And I'll agree with that. I mean, the thing is. We're never gonna stop it tonight, but at the end of this, it's not only how can we treat. What is happening now, is how can we br- help break that cycle generationally? Because I, I, I think one of the things I read at one time said, you know, people that, children that are exposed to abuse and stuff at, 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 at that age. Have a tendency to engage in that behavior later because it's learned behavior. And I'd just like to, anything we can do, once again, just like with the ambassador program that Matty and him had, it's a way to help the children. It's a way to get people engaged. And if we can figure out not only how to treat those that are, hopefully to figure out a way to help stop it on the front side.
I agree. We're always trying to, we're always trying to.
Treat the.
Treat it, but we're never trying to prevent it. And, and that goes all the way across the board.
All, all the same goes with House of Preventions, Worth of Pound of Care.
I mean, the stuff it rose is doing at the library. You're giving them a place to go, you're giving them something to do and showing somebody cares. And who knows down the road what that means to s- some of these children that have nothing else. So, I, I applaud every effort we can do for children and, and trying to do what. Trying to do what we should, not what we can, what we should do. For the future.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, we have a mu- we have a recommendation to the committee, forty thousand dollars. Uh, all right, all those in favor signify the same eye?
Uh.
Pose. Okay, motion carries.
Next, uh, next request from Fairview Housing, um, the executive director Rick Mitchell was there and stated, uh, Fairview Housing will be partnering with Appalachian Center for Hope. As their main service provider, but noted that they also operate Mended Women Lifestyle Recovery House in Amunon, as well as the Bristol Lifestyle Recovery Program in Bristol. The, uh, Fairview Housing, uh, president, Mr. Garrett, noted that Mended Women Program was working to renovate twelve beds into a higher level, more intense program and res- requested forty thousand dollars in opioid. Authority abatement direct distribution funds to assist with the estimated one hundred sixty-five thousand dollar cost. Uh, Mr. Mitchell stated that Fairview Housing has served forty-one Smith County residents to date at ma- at the Mended Women Facility and the program will serve. Will help serve a wider group of, of those in need. After discussion, Mr. Wyner did make the motion to recommend the board approve granting Fairview Housing forty thousand dollars in opioid authority. Abatement district, direct distribution funds for use at the Mended Women F- Facility. Motion was seconded by Mr. Sturgill and unanimously approved as a committee recommendation. And, um, Mr. Garrett's here to answer any questions if you have any.
Uh, I do recall from that being, that day also that we have some of our neighbors, neighbor counties who are watching, they're, they're waiting to see what we do before they make their decisions, so.
Yep.
Yeah, and I would like to say. Well, I've got a lot to say and I'm not, I know I don't have time tonight, but even in the transitional housing for women, um, we opened our first, uh, domestic violence shelter. In Johnson City, Tennessee, a- about two years ago, and we do that with HUD grants. We'd be happy to sit down at any time and talk about different ways that it can be done very inexpensively, actually. For, for, or any, any type of, you know, structure like that or facility for women, for children, whatever.
Yeah, I, I, I was very impressed with s- some of the types of cases that you all take in down there to help. Whether it's, you know, kind of incarceration or whatever, to get them blended back into society and help them also reengage with their families. I thought that was awesome.
Well, we, we've been doing transitional housing with substance abuse. A component for almost, well, twenty-eight years. And basically what we see is roughly. Ninety percent of the people that are there are there because of the families they were born into. And how, and how they were raised.
Yeah.
And so, we just try to help them change that whole mindset. And it takes a long time. We have people that have been with us for ten years. They just can't live anywhere else. But going back to, you know, our re- uh, request, um. When we first started trying to raise funds, uh, for Mended Women Lifestyle Recovery, Smith County was the first to step up. And because of that, we ended up raising about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars from Washington County, Wellspring Foundation. A couple of other foundations, a lot of money, just local donations. And it all kinda started because you folks. Said yes and got the thing started. And, and I see that happening with this. Uh, we, we do have counties waiting to see if anybody else is gonna do that. And, you know, if, if you're agreeing with that tonight, that's gonna. Start that whole train going again and, and we really, really appreciate it. Um.
The, the forty thousand dollars that we're talking about here tonight, does that just get you current, so to speak, or does that include some significant planning down the road?
The, the hundred and sixty-five thousand is for the reconstruction on the building. And if, if we had to build that twelve beds according to current code for, you know, medical. Like we're doing, it would cost, um, uh, probably around two million dollars. So, it's very, what we're trying to do is pretty inexpensive compared to building something new. But, and then we're also, that part of that is going for staffing. We're trying to raise two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total. And the difference between the one sixty-five and the two fifty would be for initial staffing. We have to have nurse practitioners and RNs on staff and things like that, so, um.
And correct me if I'm wrong, you have to have those on staff before the first patient is, is.
We do. We, we have to be fully staffed, uh, just like ACH here. The day that we open. We have to have staff, if, sixty-two beds. And the day we open, we have to be staffed up to serve sixty-two people because, uh, DBHDS, they don't know if. Fifty people are gonna show up the next day. So, anyway, that's a requirement. And, um. And there again, you all, uh, helped raise eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for that initial, uh, staff ramp up for ACH. So, you all, you all have been, uh, extremely helpful. Um, so you all should be proud of yourselves.
I'd like to say one more thing, please.
Sure. It just absolutely blows my mind that, that, that we're the ones stepping up first in this. That I, I don't get it. And, and, and I hope I'm not saying anything wrong or stepping on anybody's toes somewhere. But. We constantly are saying, what can we do, what can we do, what can we do? And we're receiving funding specifically for that. And then it's like, well, what are they doing there? No, that's what it's for. That's why we, that's why we've done this. So, you know, I, like I said, I, I think. For the most part, we're, we're in agreeance that this needs to happen. I would like to see. Movement up this way a little more. I know we want to have the ACH, but.
Yes.
But also something for the women, um, in the future, especially since we've been so.
I think the gracious.
We can help with that. We really can.
If, if I remember correctly, the goal is for ACH to be for the men and partnering with Mended Women to be for, for the women in need. Is that correct?
That is correct. And, and kinda what's happened in the industry, when we first opened Bristol Lifestyle Recovery for men, uh, five years ago. Um, we just got licensed for, it, it's a, like a low intensity residential program. And, um, but we started seeing more need for, you know, people coming out of the prison system. They're terribly addicted. And, but we can't take them because we're licensed for just low intensity. And that's more of a high intensity. If they, if they come out on certain drugs or if, if they're an alcoholic, they have to go through detox. And so, that's what we're trying to do. And so, when we were working with John Graham, originally, we were just gonna do sixty-two beds of, of low intensity. And we just kept seeing so many people that we had to transfer or recommend going to Northern Virginia or East Tennessee to. Some, uh, facilities there just for them to get detox. And then it's a seven to twenty-eight day program. Most of them don't come back to us. Eighty percent don't come back for that longer term care that's needed. So, we recommended, right in the middle of planning, ACH, we kinda stopped the process and said, hey, we need twenty-two beds for, for men's detox. And it was approved by the board and so we're doing that.
Do you want to pro- provide any type of transportation? If, if, say, I'm, I'm an officer and I'm out with someone and they're saying. I need to get somewhere now as far as some type of recovery or where. Do you have a way to provide that transportation? Usually, or is that something that has to be worked out?
It depends on the situation. Um, because of our licensing, and it's even, even gonna be a little stricter when we go to the higher intensity detox. But every, every, we have to follow all these state regulations and, um. In order for them to come into our facility, they have to be actually seen either via telehealth or in person by a medical doctor. Uh, to get approved to come in. So, it's a, it's a little bit of a process. Like, we can take people that, that just walk in the door off the street. If it's during the day, um, but if it's midnight, you know, we don't really have access to a medical doctor, so. Well, you know, but we're trying to improve on that as much as we can. It just takes a lot more staff and costs more money. Any other questions?
And just my own piece of mind here, we're talking about a one-time forty thousand or this is the first of an annual contribution recurring?
For, for now, it's a one-time forty thousand and, and, uh, I expect, um, some type of operational in the future. But the, a lot of times what we're finding is the operation, the ongoing operational, um, partnerships really is better going through the state program and get up a lot more, access to a lot more money. Uh, than what we can provide.
In essence, we're helping them stand up the process and then they can trigger other billables to keep them operational at that point.
And other funding sources through the state too.
Right. Yeah, we are, um, we get reimbursed for our expenses from, uh, Virginia Medicaid.
Gotcha.
That's our primary funding source. And Virginia does a great job. Um, I'm from, I'm from Tennessee and. Uh, they just do not have the programs. We, we can't do what we're doing in Virginia, in Tennessee. They just, they just really fall short, but. From the, from the county to the state, y'all do a great job. You really do.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
May I add something?
Yes.
Um, just for your information, I've provided this in the packet. I'm not sure if you know your attachments or not, but. Through twenty forty-two, Smith County is gonna re- is targeted to receive sixteen million eight hundred eighty-seven thousand two hundred eighty-nine dollars. That's the total we're gonna get from the OAA directly over the next twenty years. Plus, there's also additional, uh, funding that you can apply for through grants. Just for your information.
Well, it, that just tells me that, 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 that's, that's our locality. There's other localities in. This, this ain't money to sit on. This, this is money that, that needs to be getting pushed out because the need is now.
Yeah, it is. I couldn't agree more.
I'm done.
All right.
We'll agree to take more of that sixteen million.
We don't have it right now. I like your attitude, Doug.
All right, we have a, uh, recommendation from the committee, a committee recommendation. All right, we have a, uh, recommendation from the committee, a committee recommendation, uh, here, no further discussion. All those in favor signify the same eye. Aye, opposed, as, motion carries. And at this time, if you could, I'd like to take about a five-minute break. Everybody would, and then we'll pick back up, and we'll come back with Hurricane Honeymoon Billings.